Dave, we on?
Should I wait till he confirms?
Yeah.
We're just waiting, Dave.
You've got one minute. Good evening. I call order the Monroe Public Schools Board of Education meeting. Today is February 25th, 2025, and the time is 7:00 PM. Jamie, can we have roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Heck.
Here.
Mrs. Myers.
Here.
Mrs. Terasi.
Here.
Mrs. Vincent.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Here.
Could we please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with which the great justice of God.
Okay, before we begin, if anyone in the community in the audience wishes to address the board, there are forms in the back to my left corner, to your right. Please fill in those out and hand them to the assistant here, Jamie, so we can get you a schedule. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening?
There are none tonight, sir.
As we have none, can I have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the agenda that is presented before.
We have a motion. Do we have support?
Support.
Support. Jamie, can we have roll call?
Yes, Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mrs. Terasi.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes, and the motion passes seven to nothing. Superintendent Shaw, you are up now with your comments.
All right.
Six.
So, all right, so this first go around, we have, we have two buildings in here tonight. So the last time, we had a lot of fun with the middle school and Valentine's time right there. And so tonight, though, we're going to have a whole lot of fun with Manor Up First. So, Mrs. Tylinda, you want to bring your crew up and share with what's happening at Manor?
Not as funny as the last one.
I will be sure to laugh on your behalf.
We've got more of a serious approach. All right, so, Dave, you got the...
No.
Well, we have slides. They're prepared. They have their slides, but we wanted to show you some slides. Um, yeah, so we have, we have a handout for you guys, but we're here talking about our Leader in Me program at Manor Elementary. I'm Brittany Tylinda. I'm the principal, and we're going to go through and do some introductions.
Hi, my name is Eric Vandigas. I'm in sixth grade.
My name is Aiden Clough, and I'm in sixth grade.
My name is Addison Soddy. I'm in sixth, I'm in sixth grade.
My name is Bristol Duchesne, and I'm in sixth grade.
My name is Heather Lee Hayden. I'm in sixth grade.
My name is Adeline Rios, and I'm in sixth grade.
And with these students, some of them are on our student light house team, and we do have two that are on our board of delegates. One of them, Leanna Clark, couldn't be here today. She has a pretty good motorcycle, so she has to practice for that.
Um, all right, well, I guess we will start without slides, and we can show you guys the presentation after.
So Brittany, if you'd do me a favor, grab the Kleenex box, so that way when the kids step up to the microphone to talk, their faces can be on the big screen that's out with everyone in the community. Thank you.
What is Leader in Me? The Leader in Me program empowers students to become leaders in every aspect of life. There are seven habits that we follow that will be discussed later in this presentation.
The seven habits can help students may have a positive attitude, and it makes them more excited to come to school every day.
Manor became a Leader in Me school in 2014. We celebrated our 10-year anniversary last year and invited community members to hear about our program. We also had a school-wide celebration where students were able to sharpen the saw and celebrate their hard work for their goal all year, goals all year. We reached the lighthouse status in 2017 and have maintained lighthouse status ever since. Applying for the lighthouse math typically occurs three to five years after school begins, the Leader in Me process. Becoming a lighthouse school means the school provides outstanding results in school and student outcomes by implementing the Leader in Me. Fidel, with fidelity.
How we use the seven habits at school. We have posters around the school. We have a student lighthouse team and a junior lighthouse team. Big kids help in little kids' classes, sometimes on Fridays. We call them our buddy classes.
We have student-led, school-wide assemblies. We have lessons about the seven habits. We have Leader in Me curriculum, including Leader in Me binders, and we have student-led conferences.
Habit one, be proactive. Habit two, begin with the end in mind. Habit three, put first things first. Habit four, think when when. Habit five, seek first to understand then to be understood. Habit six, synergize. Habit seven, sharpen the saw. Habit one, be proactive. I'm in charge of my choices. I take initiative. I choose my actions, attitudes, and moods. I do the right thing without being asked, even when no one is looking.
And so you guys will see on the handout, they're going to go over each habit.
Habit two, begin with the end in mind. Have a plan. I plan ahead and set goals.
Habit three, put first things first. Work first, then plan. I set priorities, make a schedule, and follow my plan. I'm self-disciplined and organized.
Habit four, think when when. Everyone can win. I want everyone to be a success. I don't have to put others down to get what I want. When a conflict happens, I look for a third solution.
Habit five, seek first to understand then to be understood. I listen without interrupting. I try to see from their point of view.
Habit six, synergize. Together is better. We could all learn from, learn from each other. Learn from each other. Working in groups helps.
Habit seven, sharpen the saw. Balance feels best. I take care of my body by eating right, exercising, and getting sleep. I learn in lots of ways and in lots of places, not just at school.
Thank you, everyone, for your time today. Does anybody have any questions?
Where did you learn such great speaking voices?
Um, from, probably from the school-wide assemblies that we have. We get to speak out a lot.
So did each, each one of you choose your goal and then define it yourself, or did you work on it together, your habits?
Um, we kind of worked on them together in a way. She helped, like, design the paper that we have, Miss Tylinda did.
Wonderful. If there's no other questions, thank you, thank you, thank you for coming in tonight, and appreciate that. All right, so great job Manor Bobcats. I know that some pictures are going to be wanted right there. Thank you, Miss Tylinda, for coming in. And next up is Arborwood.
Do you have it up? Can you plug it in?
I can plug it in.
All right, so we have both Arborwood North and South with us tonight. So, Mrs. Lavender, Mrs. Moore.
Okay, we're missing two students, but I miss Lavender.
I miss Mrs. Moore.
Okay, speak a little louder. Okay, and we're missing Josh and Blaine, which I'm a little surprised about tonight, so. At Arborwood Campus, one more to us really means try, try again, and we do all the time. Um, we wanted to talk a little bit about Eagle excitement. We're in the middle of testing right now, and I was going to try to present, like, the numbers, because I know how you guys like the numbers, but we're still, like, in the middle of finalizing the reading, and then math starts tomorrow. So hopefully that will be included in one of Andrea's presentations. Um, one of the other things that we really pride ourselves on is our PDIS and our kickboard. And year-to-date, safety so far, we've had 15,739 points. Ownership, 14,000. You can read that. Attitude, 14,000, and respect, 20,000, that we're super proud about. Um, this, this I felt was important because one of the ways that we really use our kickboard points is the students get to, on the right, the students get to earn and, and gather their points, and then they can shop once a week, or once every two weeks, from our store cart. And then on the left, teachers also get to shop from a teacher cart because it's for engagement, how much they engage. Uh, well, it's how much they engage on kickboard. Just try to encourage them to make sure. Yeah, no, that's fine. No, no, it's, um, you know, to encourage them to give, you know, give the points to kids and just be cognizant of it. That's okay.
Eagle awards. I ready for typical stretch or growth. Each teacher selects students from, for kindness.
Mr. Rogers, kindness.
Yep.
And your number two, right? Yeah, go ahead.
Ms. Livy and Ms. Marsh come into our classrooms and do circles. Circles let us share ideas, listen to each other, and create safe and supportive spaces.
These are our resorted practice coach and our analysts who come in and do these.
Our deans, Mr. Lear and Ms. King, access each teacher to nominate a student that exemplifies our sore values.
Oh, I have high school.
It's Miss Love?
Okay. Because Blaine's not here. Um, the high school basketball team comes every other Monday, and we first do, like, a resorted circle. Then they help the students finish work, and then, of course, they go play basketball. Um, and they also get to go to the games for free, although the games are over with, but they will continue to come over until May.
Some special events that we have is motivat, motivational speaker Jim Basketball Jones visited Arborwood in September. He talked about our PBIS and SOAR goals. He engaged with students using basketball tricks. A famous quote by him is be kind and do the right thing. We do a Thanksgiving turkey trot to get the students active and excited.
Yeah. So it's transportation show.
Okay. On May 16th, okay, on May 16th, our sixth-grade students will be putting on our fourth annual transportation show for the community. You are all invited.
And Ms. Darla will be, should be receiving a phone call. She always participates. Okay, so we always have Monday Matters, and it, it has, helps us remain calm with calming videos, has fun activities, our monthly kickboard goals, and it helps us get ready for the week. It always has a riddle that they love to do. So I'm going to ask you our riddle for this week. Why did the genie get so mad? Who wants the eagle? For, just for tonight, though. Why did the genie get so mad?
I'd guess.
Yes.
Something rubbed him the wrong way.
Yes, yes. So you would get the eagle, yes. So we would, we announce that every Tuesday morning in the cafeteria, and, and it's like a very big competitive spirit, and the kids love it.
And they get to keep the eagle for the week in their classroom and be like, I have it.
Right.
Yep, it's fun. So we have a great support staff at Arborwood, and these are people that students can talk to when they're having a really hard time, when they're sad, or they need to calm down. They're there, and you can see a few different ones talking to them in these pictures. Um, they help with special events. We do yoga, and we have them as mentors as well. They make them feel safe and loved, and they also just, they're there to cheer you on and make you laugh during the school day. And then Student Council, it's run by Mr. Lear. He's the dean over at South. Um, these are students who were elected by their classmates, um, and they are making big decisions for the school. They're doing fun events on Fridays, their hat days, pajama days. They're selling treats right now in the cafeteria to raise money. They do food drives for Oaks. They did a penny war to raise money for a family to buy Christmas presents. So they did really great things this year, and they will continue to throughout the year in having different events and ways to raise money, or just to bring fun into the school.
The penny wars were fun. They raised $156 for a family for Christmas. Yes. Um, okay, so this is something that we do at school. I will, this is our cheer, and we would like you to participate, so...
But I have to tell a story about one of my little kindergarteners. Every time she sees me in the hallway because of this, she says to me, "Have a happy Eagles day!" And it's the cutest thing ever. So I just thought of her when we put this up there.
So actually, this started with Mr. Politzie, and when Mrs. Joseph was at Arborwood, and we would say, "Go," and everybody goes, "Eagles!" Yes. You know what, just one more thing.
And then it's, they're quiet, and they listen, and that's when we do all the funness.
Wow, you solicit this award.
Yes.
You get to pass this one, okay? This goes right here to Mr. Zimmerman. Right there in the middle, yep.
The other bald guy. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Mr. Heck, right there, where you have to go.
Oh, thank you very much.
This goes, thank you so much, sweetie.
Very nice.
Mary Vincent, and she's right there with her hair in the light, okay?
Really? Isn't really. Learning lessons.
This is the one where I just go, "Meh, meh, meh," soon?
Oh, yeah.
Right there. All right, and this is Mr. Flin. This one goes to us, hold on, we have the glasses. And then this one goes to Cindy Flynn, who's not really Cindy Flynn. And we thank you. Do you have any?
So really quick, we have to say it. "Go Eagles!"
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
Love the key for being, uh, thank you for being the key to our success. Great job, kids.
Look at the car.
I know.
Be a car show, yes, there'll be more than one.
All right, great job, everybody. Now be sure, oh, there's Wendy. So Wendy, I want to get that picture of you all. Thank you very much. Great job tonight, as always. And so again, thank you to all of our, to our two buildings and staff for coming in tonight. Uh, Mr. Heck, that concludes my first round of comments.
Okay, public commentary. Carrie, do we have any on agenda items? Okay, then we'll go to reports, contracted services. Any comments or discussion on contracted services? If not, we'll go to the consent agenda. Are there any items the board members would like to have moved off the consent agenda and moved over to new business? If not, can we get a motion to support items B to A as a consent, consent agenda?
I move to accept the items B to A, be considered as a consent agenda, and items be approved as recommended.
Is there support?
Support.
Jamie, can we have roll call?
Yes, Mrs. Terasi.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
And the motion passes six to zero. Get it right. Okay. Uh, before we move into new business, just some background, is that the items, uh, on, agenda items on new business, we've discussed at depth in prior work sessions and have been addressed in our weekly board briefs. So we may move quickly through these, but they've been thoroughly vetted and discussed. And as a reminder, our work sessions are open to the public. Next, I will turn it over to Mrs. Shook for the adoption of amended 2024-2025 budget for the general food service, student school activity, 2020 bond debt, sinking, building, site, and 2020-2023 bond capital projects.
Thank you, President Heck. Tonight, we are asking the board to move to adopt the amended 2024-2025 budgets for the general fund, food service fund, student school activity fund, 2020 bond debt fund, sinking fund, building and site sink, building and site fund, and the 2020-2023 bond capital projects fund as presented.
Do we have a motion?
Um, I move to adopt the amended 2024-2025 budget for the general food service, student school activity, 2020 bond debt, sinking, building, and site, and 2020-2023 bond capital projects fund as presented.
Support? Discussion? Do we have any discussion?
Thank you for your presentations, as always.
You always have the answers. Usually. Right, thank you.
Jamie, can we have roll call?
Yes, Mrs. Terasi.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams. Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes, and the motion passes six to zero. Next, we have the tennis court restoration.
Yep. Let your pain is going to take this one right here.
Thank you, President Heck. We're asking the board to move to approve the purchase of tennis court restorations at Monroe High School at a cost not to exceed $339,600 from court smiths. Funds for this purchase will come from the site sinking fund.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the tennis court restorations at a cost not to exceed $339,600 from court smiths from the site sinking fund.
Do we have support?
Support.
Uh, discussion?
So these are for new tennis courts? Just?
The fencing would stay, but everything inside would get redone. The only physical change, I talked to Dr. Hussin last Friday, is they're going to add a centerpiece, so when they coach, they don't have to walk all the way around. But as far as structural, it'll be the same.
All right, thank you.
But they will take it basically down to the foundation.
Yes.
Because it's at a level in, particularly in one court.
This is a redo, not just a patch and fill. It's an actual...
One other item for that, just so you're aware, that, uh, so this is the company coming in. We are still evaluating uh, the drainage out there, so we're working with color architecture on that, so we still, there, we'll come back with some, maybe another approval on another part of that whole area right there, but we need to be able to get onto their list to get the work set up. But that, that area, um, it's been out there in the spring, it, it can get...
In general, it gets pretty wet.
And these are the original tennis courts, correct?
Yeah.
I don't know if they're original, original, but they need, we've been patching them for a while and looking at the cost. It's, it's just...
I don't ever remember them ever digging these things out. I don't remember since I've been here. They have, they have been resurfaced, but I don't think we've started from scratch, which is probably what they need.
Yep.
Thirty-some years in this district.
So do we have any idea on the cost, or is it anticipated to be like, I need to fix the leaky toilet, or I have to tear out all the plumbing?
No, it, it's more about, uh, it could be potential some excavation and/or putting in, like, what do they call it? Catch basin.
They're gonna, yeah, it's more of an analyze the drainage and see if we need to do anything, which would have helped the whole high school, not just because of the tennis courts.
Yeah.
But since it's redoing it, it brought it to our attention, so, yep.
Any further discussion? If not, Jamie, can we have roll call?
Yes, Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mrs. Terasi.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes, and the motion passes six to nothing. Next, we have on the agenda the auditorium curtains.
Thank you. Um, we're asking the board to move the, to approve the following purchase of auditorium stage curtains at Monroe High School for a cost not to exceed $70,346 from Farnham Equipment Company. Funds from this purchase would come from the general fund.
I will move to approve the following purchase of the auditorium stage curtains. I'm so excited about it. Uh, at a cost not to exceed $70,346 from Farnham Equipment Company. Funds will come from the district general fund.
Support!
Discussion?
Now, I believe these are the original curtains.
Right.
Same with the high school.
What color are they going to be?
They better be red.
I just thought I would ask if there was a new color change.
Before we did the, the purchase, she was so kind to get the purchase order ready. I'm asking Mr. Politzie to meet with Steve with the color palette to make sure, because we don't want to delay the, the, we want to make sure it's exactly what they want. So they're going to confirm that, which will probably be some sort of, I'm not an architect, but reddish.
Yeah.
But I want to confirm this.
Not all reds are created equal, like, not even colored.
Couple of questions, David. What is the timing on getting the new curtains in?
So if, if we get them the purchase order first thing tomorrow, they're going to try to have them in before May 1st. It wouldn't make the actual, like, the, the spring events it would make, but not the, um, play. Now, it could come faster, but they're saying at least by May 1st, before May 1st.
Do they install them as well?
Mm-hmm.
Is, so for the curtains, is it only the red curtains in front, or does it include all of the back curtains for, like...
It's complete.
Wonderful.
I don't know the term, but when I read it, it's like there's little pieces of it.
Beautiful.
Any further discussion? Now, Jamie, can we have roll call?
Yes, Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrassi.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes!
Mr. Heck.
Yes, and the motion passes six to zero. Old business, we have one agenda item on old business.
Nope, you got a reinstatement.
Oh! Hold on.
Here, I'll give you mine.
It is not on my list.
Now you're on top.
Now you're here.
Okay. Okay, so we will first do the reinstatement, recommendations for reinstatement.
Great, thank you, President Heck. We ask the board to consider the recommendation of the reinstatement committee on this matter of student discipline and move to accept the recommendation of the committee for a full reinstatement of student A, or move to reject the recommendation of the committee and conditionally reinstate student A, or move to reject the recommendation of the reinstatement committee and deny reinstatement for student A.
Thank you, Ms. Joseph. Do we have a motion?
I move to consider the recommendation of the reinstatement committee on this matter of student discipline and move to accept the recommendation of the committee for a full reinstatement of student A.
Do we have support?
I'll support that.
Any discussion? If not, Jamie, can we have roll call?
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrassi.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes, and the motion passes six to nothing.
Now you can have your old business.
Now we go to old business. Okay, there's a, yeah, thank you. So there's a minutes revision, this would be for the January 28th, 2025 board work session.
So that, we'd had those minutes pulled, we met on that and we did a revision, and you've had that revision and it's been published. And so it is a recommendation that the board approved, the January 28th, 2025 board work session, uh, minutes, um, oh, sorry, fix this, work session be removed and replaced with the revised minutes as presented.
Do we have a motion?
I will move that the signed minutes from the January 28th, 2025 board work session be moved, removed and replaced with the revised minutes as presented.
Is there support?
Support.
Uh, any discussion?
So yes, I will put a caveat out there, when I pulled the minutes, I pulled, um, the wrong minutes, but, um, we kindly went back and made an adjustment on the minutes, so thank you for all involved. Right?
Yes, so that means if we pulled those minutes from that first, that first set, the, the wrong ones, we still have to approve those.
No, they were on the consent agenda.
Were they?
Yeah.
Thank you for that credit.
Yep. Thank you, Jamie.
Any just, oh, go ahead.
Yes, so just for like broader context, for broader explanation. So at our previous board meeting, the request was to pull board meeting two minutes for review. So those were pulled from the consent agenda for review. What remained on the consent agenda and what was approved was the work session. What, what was reviewed after the fact was that the work session needed to be edited, not the one that was actually pulled, so that's what was happening. So human error happens, it's a part of life. And so as a board, we're humans and we are part of that process too. So that's what this old business is about. So for full context, we are now approving the minutes that were not pulled from that previous, that previous board meeting, so they weren't pulled. But now we are going back with this old business to approve the things that weren't pulled because they have now been edited. So that's the full, that's all the details. Just because I wanted to provide like the, all of the context. That's all.
Thank you, any further discussion?
Nope.
Jamie, can we have roll call?
Yes, Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrassi.
Yes.
Mrs. Vincent.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes, and the motion passes six to zero. Uh, superintendent comments?
All right, so the, uh, update on the elementary redesign, redesign work. As you are aware, that we were able to, uh, name the administrators last week. Laura Lavender is the five-six principal, Kevin Pilgrim as the assistant. Kelly Lake will be at Waterloo. Yesterday, we sent out to all of our teaching staff, uh, a question, a, a Google form to fill out in regards to the selection process for, uh, teachers at, at the five-six building, at Waterloo, the Encore staff also, and also looking at any kind of, uh, bumping that may have to occur. We worked directly with the union and that process went very smoothly. And so our goal is that, again, before the end of the, of March, that the fifth and sixth grade teachers, along with the Waterloo teachers are named, Encore teachers are named, the K4 teachers and their buildings that they're validated. Um, and then also by the end of March, that we'll have any adjustments that go with the intra-district school lines, uh, those building lines for the elementaries have been also communicated out to families and the start and end times of all of the, of our buildings. So that's, uh, what we're working on right now. Then, once the, uh, staffs are named, then that next set of information will come out as far as deadlines. For, uh, example, uh, administrators going and meeting at buildings and talking to the fourth and current fourth and fifth grade students to, uh, any work that's happening with the teachers in the buildings. We are, uh, validating right now too. Uh, we are, have worked that up as far as the building layouts, so, uh, working, we'll be working through what classrooms are gonna get moved. So over the spring break, Dave and his crew will be able to take and know which classrooms are being moved and potentially even to what rooms. Uh, that's our, another big goal we have is that once the teacher has his name, that they'll be placed in their classrooms. So that way they're setting up for the summer, uh, on all the moves. So more to come on, on the redesign, but that's, uh, it's moving on very quickly and we're thrilled the, with the work of alongside of our union. Eighth grade open house, so Monroe, Monroe High School has been hosting eighth grade open houses. Uh, and so the next one is on Tuesday, March the 4th. Also Friday, March 7th, sad that we're already saying March, by the way, uh, for how fast this year is rolling, uh, it's a half day for students. Spring play, our radium girls is on March 14th and 16th. And then the Great Gatsby Gala is this Friday night. Uh, a great question was raised, uh, by one of our community members just recently about, so where do those monies, where are those monies gonna be used for? And so those monies are just to help offset a cost we would have to use any general fund dollars for activities on any of the kindness challenges that we do. So for example, we have, uh, one big challenge that we've done in the past is, um, students making bracelets and handing out and or cards, so we can use those monies for that. We have our walk coming up and there'll be expenses that go for that, we can use that money there, so. And then it's just a great opportunity though to pull the community together in the work that we're doing as a community, because it's not just Monroe Public, it's the whole community too. It has, so. So that's all I have for tonight, sir.
Okay, thank you Superintendent Shaw. Do we have any public commentary?
We do not.
Okay, is there any board commentary? Start with Larry?
Yeah, I would just like to say, Cassie, thanks for your hard work on the, uh, budget. You actually take all of that data and actually turn it into something we can understand. Thank you. That's all I got.
Carrie? Darla?
Um, one thing, and I thought of it as, Andy, thank you for giving, um, an update on the, uh, elementary design. On the, I didn't bring it with me, David, on the, the list of where we're at, um, on that big old chart you made. Are we, are we, because we started kind of late, is it, where is it at on the chart? Are we gonna like keep an update on that or, could, just because we have it, and I didn't bring it, but?
We're, we're, we're on track, the, the, as far as my areas is, once we've, we've, things that I've done, uh, we're on track. But things that we've worked on is assessing classrooms. So once we do get the list, we know which ones need carpet, which ones need painting. We've met twice, or three times, with, um, furniture companies to work with Waterloo and getting that district-wide template. We're getting ready to turn that over to Ms. Joseph's team to analyze. We've worked on the tech layout, so as classrooms move, there's a template. We won't disrupt teachers that have, are, that won't be moving. But if they're part of that fifth and sixth or they're leaving, there'll be a template we'll utilize. So we can reduce the amount of holes in ceilings and moving back and forth. So that layout will be presented to Terry's team as well to say, okay, we like these three layouts, let's stick with that. And then it'll help us be more efficient and also less damage in the room or change moving forward. So I think we're in a good place. I will be honest, once we get that list, spring break's gonna be a busy week because that's when we, the date is finished, because it's, it's hard to make any like planned plan as far as the physical moves until we have that list. But we're doing all the pre-work, so we'll be ready.
I just kind of thought maybe you were the keeper of the checklist and that's kind of why I said that, so. And, and you, you were the one that presented it. So when we look at the financial costs are coming, and I know that the technology thing's coming, and I heard about the furniture coming, so, um, how does that play into the cost for the project? Because it sounds like we're gonna add a lot more onto that.
Not, so the, when, when we look at the fifth and sixth grade, when it comes to furniture, we'll be pulling all the furniture from current fifth, sixth grade classrooms. What we're trying to also do though is, as we move stuff over, some of that will get evaluated, like can it actually be moved? Um, we were in one sixth grade classroom, we were doing the tours over at Manor, and that classroom has two different types of furniture in it. And, but the big one is though, is at, is using Waterloo as our template. So that's, that's the building really that's going to, we're gonna put furniture in to use to say, okay, this is what, kind of furniture goes in, a kindergarten room, first grade, second, third, fourth. And then in the future, be able to start replacing. And we say that because some of the furniture that, um, that we saw, I know for a fact was purchased in the 1990s or in the late 80s. And so it's, it's useful life, I mean, it's hitting it, so, but this is a longer plan as far as furniture replacement will go. But while we're doing this work, we really, it's more that work at Waterloo, uh, to make that, that, uh, template for us so that when we start having the, uh, ability through our, through our funding mechanisms, to keep changing, we will. Some, there are some classrooms potentially at the five-six building based on the furniture move, and we're talking about first student furniture, okay, um, that may have to be replaced. But then also, when we start to look at the classroom stuff for the teachers, okay, is more of a standardization even for them. And so that, because what we find is we, we spend a lot of time and energy when we move classrooms about and those workspaces. And so we want to make sure that, uh, when we put that building back together, it's done in a very appropriate way. So the, the $250,000 that we talked about for, that's part of, with furniture, anything like that, that would be for, uh, the five-six building, the Waterloo is totally something different.
I thought it was all part of the same elementary redesign, because it included all the schools in the project. So my understanding was all schools, so I guess here's my, here's my request. Can we keep track of the funds that are being spent on this project? And I think everything we're doing at elementary schools are part of it because that was an elementary redesign plan that included the change of a five-six. So just for fiscal responsibility, what are the costs that are gonna be associated? And just keep track of it, so we have a final calendar. Yep, just keep us abreast of it, I'd be appreciative of that.
And the calendar, we'll, uh, because I know we're gonna add and keep refining it down, so periodically we'll go, all right, let's go over the, uh, we'll show you the timeline, uh, everything we've accomplished. And there, there are some products, please understand though, that would have already, wouldn't matter if we did the redesign or not, would have happened. And so, for example, if there's a carpet replacement in a classroom, that's something that would have naturally happened.
No, those kind of things that we discussed during the time, that there were just some natural, natural times necessary to do some of that. I don't recall, um, some of these other conversations, so again, I'm just making a request. If we can just track this, because we put this all out to the community and just make sure what we said this is only gonna cost, that we're not, you know, driving it crazy. Thank you for that.
My assumption is Waterloo really was a separate bond project and those costs really.
We were gonna have to do that, whether we did this redesign either way, if we were gonna open it.
Yeah, I mean, that was part of the bond, to reopen it, whatever we reopen it as.
Right.
Those costs go against that bond project.
But it was only the major stuff, it wasn't like the carpeting and all that, was it?
Oh, yeah.
Was it everything?
We wanted to get that school kind of checked off our list, so we did the, the lighting, the asbestos abatement.
And that all came out of bond money?
Bond or sinking fund.
Yep.
So that way we're not having to go back in that building a second time.
So I'm curious, I'm curious, Darla, if I can kind of like piggyback off of your idea. So the timeline document that you had with all of the different components of the move for the five-six proposal, and each of the components had its own line showing us when those phases would be happening. If we could just add a column for associated costs for each of those components, I feel like that would be a really great way for us to see not only how the timeline is shaping up in reality compared to like the proposed, like our projected timeline. And then also we could see the actual cost connected to each of those items.
I would say that anything that isn't captured on that line.
Yep.
My redesign stipend will be included as well.
That has not been approved.
If you do use Microsoft Project, that's.
That's what we are.
Big trade into it.
Yeah.
We could, we could start.
He's a salary employee, these are other girls.
I can start including that more briefly.
It does come out occasionally, especially after the 7:30 hour. Yeah, trust me after.
Stacy?
I just want to thank Jamie for the changes that she's made to the minutes, and I think you do a great job.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Jamie.
Mary?
I'm glad that you brought that up. So I would like the board to consider an idea. So, um, for minutes, just because, um, in our minutes, we have a recording that goes along with them and the recording is time stamped per each discussionary item for each agenda item. Words are hard. Um, so with that, for my opinion, I don't think that we need to have as much copious notes because I feel like there's redundancy there, that, and the note taking, albeit it's wonderful. But I feel like the note taking might not most accurately capture what's being discussed the way that an actual recording of what the discussion actually is can. And now with adaptive technologies, people that need like visual representations of words or Braille, they can have their assistive technology provide that to them with the recording that's provided. I feel that our minutes might not need as much copious notes as what they currently have. So my suggestion for your consideration is that we pare down or possibly eliminate the note taking and rely more heavily on the recorded components of what we provide. Just because the recordings will stay connected to our agendas in perpetuity. Right, like even if our records at this building just are, get destroyed, they will be on registry with the state forever. So it's just something. Yes.
Okay.
Yep, they will stay forever too.
I like that.
Yes, so I would just like for the board to consider. That's all.
No, it's, it's a fair request, because typically if you, in fact, if you read through Robert's rules, basically the only requirements for minutes are the decision process. So what is the vote, what is the motion, who's the second? And adding all the discussion is really extra. So I think it's a fair, fair request.
So I'm gonna piggyback off of you and suggest that maybe we make this, um, just a, a quick addendum on one of our work sessions, that we can kind of take a look and throw some ideas out there and see what we come up with.
Okay. Anything else, Mary?
That's all.
Okay. Just to wrap it up, um, I'm surprised you didn't announce it, Superintendent Shaw. Tomorrow night is the National Honor Society induction at 7:00 PM. He's a former National Honor Society member. I certainly will be there and encourage others to be there to recognize them as well. What? Oh, is it? I'll be at National Honor.
Yes.
Sorry. And that's all I have, any, um, I guess, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'm making a motion.
A motion, we have support, all in favor? So, um, that concludes our. that concludes our agenda for this evening. Our next regular Board of Education meeting will be held Tuesday, March eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, and will begin at seven PM. The board work session will be held prior to the board meeting, beginning at five-thirty PM. And Monroe Public Schools Board of Education for Tuesday, February twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five is adjourned at seven forty-six PM.